And we have a presentation called Dollars and Cents of Development. And cents is S E N S E, not the change in your pocket. So some of you may remember, I've mentioned in passing that Urban Three has been working on a project with New Hampshire Housing that Exeter has participated in. The first part of the study was kind of examine the revenue side of land uses. Like how much does various different types of land use generate in revenue? And the second part of the study examines the expense side because you have to, you know, you can see the revenue side but understand the expense side. So in other words, what do different types of land use cost cities and towns over the long term? Exeter was fortunate enough to be asked by New Hampshire Housing to participate in the second part of the analysis that included four New Hampshire municipalities. So I appreciate them being participating in this. They have now completed the second part. And I have Joe Mancosi from Urban Three will be presenting to the board. And the presentation will cover how you currently fund your towns, value map spatially, the long-term costs of keeping the town functioning, kind of a utility analysis, and how development choices dictate costs and revenues. So what your land use decisions you make and what does that, what does that actually cost the town? So Joe Manco, Joseph Minicozy, Minicozy, sorry, I think I made a mistake there. Minicozy. He's part of the American Institute of Certified Planners. He's the principal of Urban Three. And prior to creating Urban Three, he served as the executive director for the Asheville Downtown Association. Joe is an urban planner imagining new ways to think about and visualize land use, urban design, and economics. Joe founded Urban Three to explain and visualize market dynamics created by tax and land use policies. So very excited about this. I believe this will be a very informative presentation that will be helpful in future planning for Exeter. And I'd also like to thank New Hampshire Housing. George Regan is with us. Hampshire Housing, Senator Reitzman's here. Nick from Seacoast Workforce Housing Coalition is here as well. So thank you for participating with us. And without further ado, I'll pass it on to Mr. Minicozy.
Thank you, Mr. Shables. Welcome, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Minicozy.
Thank you. Okay, let me get this shared up over here. All right, well, thanks, thanks for having me and thanks for allowing me to do this presentation. I'm going to be showing a lot of pictures. I speak in pictures. That's sort of how I explain cities. Actually, I'll say the word y'all a lot, even though I grew up in upstate New York. I've sort of adopted the word. It's very efficient. I also live in North Carolina now. But I live in Asheville, North Carolina, which is up in the mountains. And this is a shot of what Asheville used to look like in the 1980s. We were effectively just boarded up and had an attitude that the city was not who we are, that we're a bunch of rural mountain people and not an urban place. Asheville was the second largest city in North Carolina up until 1930, the Depression. But let's see, how do I get this thing out of here? I think that's a good, is that? Yeah. Bob's here. Thanks, Bob.
Bob, even in North Carolina, they know that you can fix things.
Thank you, sir. But his attitude was that'll never work here. This isn't who we are. And it is sort of an attitude that a lot of places have where people just can't see change happening or the opportunity. I ended up working for Julian Price's company, Public Interest Projects, which is a for-profit real estate development company. He put his inheritance into basically this development company that we would fix buildings and start businesses. So this is one of our, so basically is making people opportunities for people to live downtown. But what we found ourselves doing is constantly talking with our elected officials about what does it mean for us to do work in your community? But more importantly, how do we speak to our citizens to get them to understand why some development is better than others? And I want to go back to what, what cities and towns are. If you look up the word incorporate in the Oxford American Dictionary, it says to constitute a company, a city, or other organization as a legal corporation. So by law, y'all are the Board of Directors for a large corporation. Your city's incorporated, your county's incorporated, your state's incorporated, and our country's incorporated. Joe Biden said this on the Stephen Colbert Show, the United States is the largest corporation in the world. And I'm such a nerd that I looked it up. This is the law on the bottom of the slide down there, the, the U.S. Code that lists us as a federal corporation. We're not a capitalist corporation. We're essentially a social corporation. It's our form of government. So my city at $14 billion of taxable value is seven times the value of Ted Turner. So is Ted Turner going to be making his decisions based on what's on Facebook or what somebody's complaining about? Now surely he's going to be taking in that information, but he's going to be looking at certain data points to understand the community's revenue side. So y'all are worth $2 billion in value. So that's a very potent, potent little, little city. So, so my city is a, is a finite boundary of land that has to be managed. North Carolina is a little bit batty. Our state has actually made it illegal for my city to annex land until December 30th, 2026. But, you know, here, up here, y'all are confined by other towns that are up against your borders. So you have that constriction in New England. But the land that you have is critically important. So when you talk to farmers, farmers are always talking in economic terms, what, what a crop yield is per acre, the water per acre, the labor per acre. Cities are no different. It's those buildings that are your crops. So this is a building that we rehabbed, ground floor retail, second floor office, and upper story residential. We wouldn't have done this if the city didn't do the redevelopment in downtown and they fixed the streetscape. So thank you, city, for the garbage can, the bike rack, two benches, and a street tree. That's awesome. And we're actually accused of being subsidized by the city for having that, which I can understand that somebody would say that. But we would turn around and talk to the community and say, well, realize that we took that building from $300,000 to $11 million, which represents a 3,500% increase in taxes on that property. So y'all can go out and buy 3,500% more garbage cans as far as we're concerned. This is about building communities' wealth, right? But people have biases. They're like, well, Joe, that's cute. That's $11 million. This Walmart's $20 million. Fair enough, that's double the value, but it took 34 acres of my community to make that Walmart happen versus our .2 acres. So if you're just using gross real estate value, you're missing the point of efficiency. So, so per acre, we're producing 100 times more property taxes, double the retail taxes, obviously more residential, and more jobs. Incidentally, y'all opened this meeting by talking about small business and the potency for small business, and this shows you the numbers behind it. Small businesses typically employ more people, they, they pay their salaries more, and they also have a higher retail tax return in most communities that we analyze. So the data supports that. Now, I would argue that people don't see this because one is we're all pretty bad at math. This is, you know, this is all fifth grade division that I'm doing here. And we just get in these habits of how we talk about math. So let me just change, change the analogy for a second. When we talk about cars, we don't say what the miles per tank are, right? You realize how weird that sounds with me just saying it because we now know that tanks are all different sizes. I shouldn't be bragging about my Ford F-150 at 650 miles per tank, right? We say miles per gallon, the number's just changed, and we should all be driving BMW Acedos at 70 miles per gallon. You know, this is where potency, we understand that now. This is also a joke. It's, thank you for laughing. You know, the BMW Acedo is a beautiful little car. It's also very dangerous. If you have a head on, on that thing, you're stuck in it. But anyway, I'm, I'm using this to just get you into the, the, the language that I use about potency. And this is taking about, I don't know, 60 different cities in our dataset. For every dollar of county taxes, somebody out in the county, now it doesn't mean anything in New England, but in the others, mostly like 40, 40 or so states, this is critically important for the folks that are in unincorporated areas. For every dollar that they're paying in county taxes, their brother and sister in the city's paying about five times that. Here's the Walmart, there's the mall. This is a two-story building on Main Street right there. And you see, as you start to stack those stories, you go to a three-story building and a six-story building, notice how it jumps up. And this could be in Driggs, Idaho, Durham, North Carolina, or Dallas. When you stack those stories, you're really getting potent. When I first started doing this, there are folks that would say to me like, you know, dude, what's your problem? Why do you hate Walmart? And you're just missing the point if that's a takeaway. I've actually presented at the International Association of Tax Assessing Officers. I don't know if you all hang out with tax assessors. It's probably the squarest conference I've ever presented to. Makes a planning conference feel like Burning Man. This guy got up there and presented at eight in the morning on how cheap Walmarts are. Let you, just think about how awesome that is. 3,000 assessors in one meeting, he's getting all of his property tax bills lowered in one meeting. Assessors are agnostic. If it's a cheap building, it's a cheap building, right? So I went up to the microphone and I asked him, I said, Mr. Terrell, what's the useful life of one of your buildings? And he said, 15, 20 years. We're designing the building to depreciate it as fast as possible. We'll build another building and walk away from the last one. We don't care about the buildings they throw away. So in a lot of communities, you, you see this, where there's the dead Walmart on one side of town and the new Walmarts on the other. So this is your community, this is your corporation. Is that the investment that you want? A 15-year relationship? Which is about the relationship of me to a cat, right? I'll lease more in the passing of the cats. Sorry, I'm a dog person, so I have to work that in there. You know, I'm saying, I'm making a joke out of this, but I want you to realize that your community's investments in the modern era are all based on financial cash flows. So make sure you're coming to the decision with the same thinking. Your, your, your great-grandparents who left you this Main Street weren't thinking that way. They were thinking about building place in the longevity of community investment. But now capital markets operate in cities differently. It's not local money that builds cities anymore. It's all of these transactions that are flowing at a much larger scale. So I would argue that people don't see it because we're not looking at it by asking the right questions, or we just don't visualize it properly. So I can take a snapshot in your head and show you your brain and what's going on with your creative thought process in green versus your brainstem activity in blue, right? I can show you what's going on in your head. Can, can I do that with your community? So I'll just start with my community for a second. This is my county. 450 square miles, this is Buncon County. This is Mount Mitchell, part of the Blue Ridge Parkway. This tallest mountain east of the Mississippi. And Pisgah Forest is the second tallest mountain down here. So they're gray, they're non-taxable. So we have a little key up here. Gray is non-taxable, green is low value. So you see out here is very low value, and purple is high value. So this is the Biltmore Estate right there. That's America's largest house, the Vanderbilt Mansion. That one house is worth $100 million. So when the Cecil family who owns the house, when they show up at a council, council meeting, we all genuflect and thank them for their time. They're very important. But it's really not a fair way of looking at it because it's 180,000 square foot house. Does anybody in your community have 180,000 square foot house? Or how about half that? You know, so it's just, it's the biggest gas tank, right? So rather than total value, here's value per acre, different map. And we don't even stop here. I'll just show it to you in 3D. So this is how we talk about our community is that we're all county taxpayers, right? So across our county, where's the county getting all of its money? It's the big purple thing. What is the big purple thing? Well, that's our downtown, just shooting off taxes off the map. So in defense to my friends that live out here in Fairview who think they're paying a lot of taxes, they have no idea what we're paying in downtown and in the city. So we're all in it together. Let's just have a shared, common conversation about wealth building in our community. Secondly, you can see our little cousin over here, Black Mountain, which is a little village of 13,000 people. You can see it's a little downtown popping up, too. So from a standpoint of urban design, that pattern that we used to build was incredibly potent. And you can see the sprawl on the south side of my city is very, very low potency, but a lot of spread of infrastructure that goes out there for very little revenue. So we're just giving people a visual way of understanding their budget. And our attitude is to show you the information and not just talk about it. So we did a model with your state housing office, and Mr. Regan brought us in to do the whole state. But we focused on 15 communities. First, I'll run through the state model. Y'all are, your state's like the size of a county in the south. It's, it's not that large. But this is your total value and then your value per acre. And so you can see the heat shift. The big parcels obviously are very valuable, but when you go potency or per acre, you see the shift slide on down toward Nashua down here, but all along the highway of 93. There are these black parcels that are in there. That's just missing data, which your state has, and those are pretty rural environments. It means the data's not there, but they are being taxed. It's just there are very, very few people in those holes. So from a taxable, non-taxable standpoint, your state's about 22% non-taxable. This isn't to say that non-taxable is bad. It's good to have parks, it's good to have the academy in town, which is non-taxable. So this is the state in 3D, some of it. This is, this is, you can see Portsmouth kind of shooting off the map over here. We'll zoom in, in, into your town in just a second, and you can see Manchester right here, downtown Manchester kind of popping up. The communities that we focused on were these 15 communities we have. From the most rural is Berlin, up at the top of the state. Obviously, the stuff that hugs, hugs the coast is highly potent because of the, the effect of the waterfront properties and their downtowns. You can see the difference between Nashua and Manchester in the model. Nashua is pretty flat by comparison. In Manchester, you can see it's downtown kind of shooting up in the center right here is a purple mountain. For y'all, this is your city total value. The hospital is very, very valuable. Again, it's total value. Value per acre, it drops down. And then here's your 3D with your downtown kind of popping up in the center in here. We'll get into some of the details in, in that as well. Again, as you're, the in-town older neighborhoods are higher potency than the, the more suburban stuff out at the West Edge. And then when you get into your cousins around the area, this is like the seacoast area, we have Portsmouth really kind of hammering it with their downtown because of the density and potency of those buildings. And again, it's not like they have mile-high buildings there. You all know that the town, it's three or four-story buildings, but here you are here. From a county standpoint, you take up 2% of the county. I know the county does, doesn't have a high mileage rate, but you're still paying something to the county. Well, you're paying in the county's portfolio of property taxes, about 4% of their property taxes. So from a ratio of footprint to potency, you're about a 1 to 2 ratio of potency for the county. It's, that's not strong. It's still potent. You're above your land area consumption, but it's, you're partially not that potent because of what's going on in Portsmouth, basically, and along the coast. Inside your city, your downtown is about .3% of the land area of your city. It's producing about, let's call it 3% of your city's value. That's like a 1 to 9 ratio of productivity. So pound for pound, your, your downtown is, is crushing it, which is your fertile soil in your community. Your downtown is the shareholder of the county, so 1/100 of a percent, and producing about a 10th of a percent of value, which is a 1 to 14 ratio of value for the, for the county. So what's good for you and what you do in the downtown is, is, is great for you, but it's incredible for the county because the county's getting more of a return on that investment. Yet they're not doing anything from an investment standpoint of what they're putting in. So they're getting out and not putting in. Taxable, non-taxable, your county is about, Rockland County is about 20% non-taxable. There is some missing data in your, in your county. And when you get into the city, you're looking at about, or the town, you're looking at about 32%, which is a little on the high side, but this is, these are choices that you all make for your open space and for, for the, the campus that you have here. And there's a return on that and your quality of life. This isn't to say to, to develop on everything. It's just be aware of this as a metric. Land use types, just to kind of go through them, your single family is averaging about $900,000 an acre. Your multifamily is about 1.4 million an acre. There's a, there's a, there's a bias that people have about multifamily where they think that it's not valuable, but it actually turns out it is potent, particularly in your community, more potent than single family. Commercial is actually about where a single family is for the commercial box stuff. And when you get into your mixed-use stuff in your downtown, you're looking at about 7 million, 7.6 million an acre of potency. And then your peak value per acre is this little guy here, the three stories, and killing it at about 13 million an acre for the top performer. So a lot of this, just view this as a CAT scan. This could help you as you make decisions going forward. Obviously, 13 million an acre is going to be better than, I was joking with Dave earlier about the drive-through that's across the street from you all, very low producer in your most fertile soil of investment. So think of all the infrastructure that you have in your downtown, and I can come in and underbuild in your community, and you're going to get a very low return on that. Now, this is just a different way of looking at the map, is 2D instead of 3D and just seeing those properties. But you all know these buildings in your community. And also, we'll have this as a PDF file that you can go through, a lot easier than the speed at which I'm moving through this. So that was the revenue side. We did that during the pandemic. We, there's actually a video of all of this that you all can watch as well. But we came back to do the cost side. For the cost, it's going to be geospatial. This is actually a slide we made for Dover. But there's the, the physical stuff that's spatial, stormwater systems, your roads, things like that. A bus is going to be spatial where it's driving around. And then there's the non-spatial stuff, like the town manager, the, that's their town attorney, Josh Wyatt there. Everybody should have Josh, the same way everybody should have Dave or, or Bob. You know, it's just, that's a service in your community that's not geospatial. So from a numbers standpoint, and this is, again, I'm a picture guy. I like to see graphs and charts. So we took your budget and turned it into this flow chart of where's your money come from? And it flows into your general fund or your operating budget? And then where does it flow to? In this budget here, we, we've taken the school system out of it. This is just your public works, your fire, your police, planning department. And you can see like the account that the planning budget here versus the police budget right there, just as, as line items. But we're going to break through this stuff to pull into the fund buckets for your roads and pipes and physical stuff like that. This is your budget as a pie chart, and where it comes in from your revenue standpoint, you're pulling in about $20 million of, for 2021, and that's your property taxes. In the south, you find a lot of cities are run off retail taxes, which is kind of stupid, actually. It's just, think about what happens in a recession when somebody's not buying a boat or a TV. All of a sudden, you can't afford your government. Like you can't operate with that kind of whimsy of revenue. So it's property taxes is a very stable way to do it. This is your, your spending side in your general fund. And we're going to focus on the public works investment, which is about 26% of, of where you're spending your money. Also, we added in the, the debt service. Debt service is money that you bought to do those projects. So that's what you're paying to that bonding agency, interest payments, basically. The debt financing, to be aware of what, what happens with roads, oops, roads have a life. So if I'm a developer and build a road and give it to you, it's not a free gift, it's an ongoing liability. There's a misnomer on how finance officers talk about roads. They talk about them as assets, and they're, they're really not. It's a liability. An asset would be like, for me, this computer is an asset. I can sell this computer to any one of y'all. Can you pick your roads up and sell them to Manchester? No, you're stuck with them forever. So they have a life cycle to them. Every 10 years or so, you're going to be doing a rehab or in a full reconstruction. For y'all, it's going to be probably somewhere around 60 years out. There's only so many cycles that you can do on a road before you have to get to the basement of it and kind of, that's, that's the expensive stuff. So when I talk about lifecycle costs for any of your infrastructures, that's the window that we're looking at. What's going to be your total obligated burden for that piece of infrastructure over its life? So what, in, in real estate parlance, if I, if I buy a, a building, and I know there's an air conditioner on that building that's on the roof, like for a mall, an air conditioner is going to cost me $89,000. So I have to have a savings fund to build $89,000 to spend every 20 years, right? So I'm going to charge a little piece of reserve for that. So I'll give you an example of the roads in Lebanon. We talked with their engineers and got some details on it. They're taking out, they're actually taking out a $10 million bond right now to pay for their roads and fix them. So that's going to be a payout of $50,000, or $500,000 every year for the next 20 years. That's their bond cycle. That's their payment they're paying every 50 years, but paying an additional $3 million of interest on top of that. So to buy the $10 million, you have to spend $3 million to get there, right? That's that $3 million in your community to pay for a dog park or anything. That's $3 million that goes to a bond company that they own. And then you start that cycle again. That, that you, that's showing you that you don't have the money to pay for the road if you have to take money from somewhere to pay for it, right? So there's a lifecycle in the road where it goes from excellent, and then there's this kind of slope to it. Your engineers know this stuff. But the way that we look at the bond payments is like using a credit card to pay for roads. And it's a habit that, it's not just you all, it's a, it's a North, it's a New Hampshire habit that you all use a lot of bonds to pay for things rather than take on a tax burden because there's this kind of bias against people raising taxes. Right? You should try, you should try South Carolina, they're even crazier. But, um, anyway, this is, this is what's going on with the bond payment. So when you, when you buy that money, this is your, this is your, your debt service over time, those little red bricks there, underground, that's what you're paying out. And then you start that process over again, right? So this is the lifecycle of roads. I guess the thing that I'd like to proffer is there's other ways to consider this. When you start stacking it up, you start to see that you actually are paying interest on top of that road of $3 million. So make sure that y'all, as a community, talk about that and say, is it worth it to do that investment and to spend that money? Let's just all be straight about it and know that that $3 million still is going to be coming out of property taxes to pay for the bond, right? So you're paying it one way or another. Either call it a tax or call it an interest payment to the bank so people are aware of it. Or you can say, we're going to, we're going to figure out that fund going forward, and we're going to have a reserve account. And that reserve account is going to be a sunk fund that's going to draw its own interest payment. You know, you can make an investment somewhere with that, draw the tax down now. Canadians actually do that as part of their budget. They have a reserve account and a growth fund. But what ends up happening is you'll still spend that money in the future for the rehab, but when you stack it up, let's see, if the magic of this works, you'll pay for the investment, but you'll also have interest that you can accrue to fold forward in the, in the next payments. You actually gain money, still spend the $10 million, but use that money and control that money rather than send it over to the bond agencies. So that's just something I just want to leave out there, is something to consider. I'm not saying do it, it's just, you should have the conversation. From a standpoint of owning roads, and again, these, these numbers are from, from Lebanon. When you look at the way that people treat road payments or road usage, when it, when you're given the road, it's excellent, high quality, and they actually do these, your engineering department does this, called a PCI index. They're tracking how the road falls apart. And then usually what happens is we wait for it to fail or to get poor, and then we reclaim it. We redo it, spend another $1.2 million, and we just have these cycles going on like this, right? There's another way of handling this. You're going to have, living with a fair to poor condition for those little windows right there in red. This is, again, their numbers, $7.5 million is their annualized cost of maintaining that cycle. So if you just change the way that you're doing rehab on a project, and you do your rehabs sooner and more often, you can actually delay the, the fall by doing preventative maintenance where you can stretch out the infrastructure longer. It's still going to fall, it's still going to fail and drop down, but you can delay the, the cost over time. And this is what that curve looks like. Your full reconstruction at the end of that window is 1.3 million. So your annualized cost actually drops from seven, was it 7.5 down to 6.8? So you're actually saving money by spending it more often, if you will. Think of it as like brushing your teeth more. You're not, you're going to have less crowns and less fillings with that. So this is the two of them side by side, and we'll stack up their payments. So it's 7.5 for the cycle above, and it's 6.8 for the, for the cycle below. So these are, again, choices where you can do, I'm just trying to visualize what an engineer may say, these two different options of fixing roads. A couple of things here. Notice the, the average in green. You actually live between good to fair as an average for the first, for the rehab way. For the preservation way, you're actually living between good and excellent. So your roads will be in better shape, you're going to be spending money more, which you may get some resistance from your community about spending money more in your community. But this is spending more to save money in the long haul. Just looking at that, again, the lifecycle of, of the road. This is our, I like to call this the reggae color. But this is like, you're living more in the, in the green than in the yellow above. And this is kind of the chart showing that. You actually, actually, you actually have a lot of opportunity. You notice these up at the top actually dip into the red, where you don't have any of the red with the preventative maintenance. The other thing to be aware of, and this is, you know, asphalt costs, costs money. It's a, it's a fossil fuel. It's a, it's actually a residual byproduct of gasoline production. So the more that we actually, the irony is when we start to become more of electric cars, we're going to be producing less gas, which means asphalt is going to go up in more money. But just over the last year, asphalt, and this is the Federal Reserve's money, it's gone from 280 to 360. So just in last year alone, the cost of asphalt has gone up 30%. This is not counting the inflation period that we're going through in the year 2022. So these are things, as your staff brings numbers forward to you, they're stuck in this world of what's going on in the marketplace for the cost of these, these goods. They have to pay for them to fix a road. When people say, I don't want to pay more taxes, in Florida, they actually have a tax cap on, on property revenue growth. The market doesn't respond that way. You know, it's like the cost of roads don't, don't, don't get capped. So just be honest with the citizens to make sure that they're aware, they're aware of that. For your roads and pipes, you actually have enough roads to go to Freeport. So you have about 89 miles of roads, which can buy you a pair of L.L. Bean boots if you want. But that's your roads. We couldn't resist the L.L. Bean joke. The analyst is from Maine, and my staff. You have enough pipes to go down to Hartford, Connecticut, the Long Way, not the direct route. These are your systems. I won't go through all of them, but we have them for you. We map them to figure out where they are and where they're going. You have a wastewater system of about 62 miles, which translates to about, let's call it 8.7 million a year. 62 miles of water at about 4.2 million a year. Stormwater at 47 miles at about 4.5 million a year. And your roads and sidewalks is 100, let's call it 180 miles plus 35 for your sidewalks, and about 8.2. This is kind of the analysis that we're doing to put into the model. And these are just them individually as a trial. Just skip over these, get to the bar chart. So your current spending is about a little over 15 million. You're, you have an additional needed spending of roads, if you were to think about the reserve account, and additional needed spending for sewer and water on top of that, and stormwater. So we're seeing that your, your budget deficit is somewhere around $10 million of, of where that, that fund should be to carry, carry what you own going forward. Here it is, is a, is a map now. This is your revenue side. This is a 3D of your, of your, your operating revenues, your charges for services laid on top of that. You actually do charge about 9.5 million in services. This is your property tax kind of laid on that, on top of the model production. So these other two are more flat. This is more spiky because of the buildings and property taxes, particularly out of the downtown. And then this is your costs for your operating expenses currently at about 12.2. The roads additional and the pipes on, on that. And then squeezing them all together, this is the side view. Kind of if you're looking at the whole city floating in, or town floating in a lake with the revenues coming above the water line and the sunk costs below the water line, you're looking at a, that's your 8.2 million deficit right there. And again, this is just the same model, just rather than side by side. Sorry, come on now. This is stacking it so you can see what penetrates through and putting those buildings back on it. So, you know, this, this is, you all are doing all right. You have a pretty dense community, which is good. So unlike southern towns that we see that kind of stretch out, they're sort of done a lot of growing without a long-term plan or longevity to have buildings that are actually being productive for hundreds of years, the way that you all have. So you're in good shape. But this is just some snapshots of the model showing your net positives. And with that, I'll get into, we are doing this through four other cities in the, in the state. This is your population by comparison to your peer groups. So we're doing Nashua, Dover, y'all, and then Lebanon. So you're, you're not the smallest. You're about 14,000. This is your, your area in acres, where Lebanon's got the most acreage, which is going to be a problem because they're going to stretch their infrastructure further. And you see it here with, your value is about, let's call you about 1.7 billion. Dover's about 3.4 billion, and Nashua is about close to 8 billion of potency. This is how you're taxable, non-taxable compared to your peer group. You're at about 32%. You're at the high end of non-taxable. And by comparison, Dover's about half yours in non-taxable. Again, this isn't a judgment call, it's just this is what you are. And then your miles of, of roads, miles per person is probably more important. This is, this is where you are from your miles of road per person. I thought I had, so you translate into about 58 feet of, of road per person versus Lebanon at about 148 feet of road per person. So when you think of that burden that they have, it's, it's going to be more stressful in Lebanon than it will be for you all. So you're doing all right there. And then this is your annualized lifecycle cost per person. You're looking at, you should be somewhere around $1,800 per person is your, is your lifecycle cost per person, is like a budget, that's it. And then just to roll up, this is looking at the three, you and your peers side by side. Your population density, Nashua is the most dense. It's 3,000 people per square mile. The amount of roads that they have, they've got a lot more roads and pipes in Nashua than what you all have, and you're doing better than Lebanon. And your deficit is actually, you're doing the best out of this. So consider yourself thankful for not being Nashua at $94 billion of deficit. That's what they have to deal with in their community. And your revenue, revenue shortfall as a percent of your overall budget is about 27%. So this is, again, it's, it's not to say that you're immediately collapsing and there's potholes all over the place. It's just be aware of, there's a reality to the cost of your roads and infrastructure. And we hope that these models and images help your community see it. So, so now what? What do you do with all of this information? I know they just dropped a lot of stuff on you, hundreds of slides of stuff. One is education funding is going to be expensive for you all. I have a segment on education funding we can get into if you want to talk about it during Q and A. We did this in Dover. This is the, on the left is the taxable value per student per acre. So this is the revenue, the taxable value per acre per student of Point Place. This is Redding Gardens. So two different types of multifamily. One is, one is more dense and more urbane or urban. Then the other is the more suburban multifamily. And that result residual is different in the, in the value production. And then this is single family in Dover and what it produces per student per acre. So when you stretch out, there is a cost to that. There's going to be a lot more infrastructure. Think of it like a snowplow, plowing 50 foot of right away for five people or 50 foot of right away for one person. It's going to be more expensive for the one person. Know where your money goes. We visualize that. We also visualize it in your budget. So you have this as a, as a, as a flow chart. This is Lebanon's here, but we have yours that we'll give you. Productivity responds to how you build. This is exactly what this model's all about. You know, it's like, just being honest with stretching out and having that. You know, I, I live in a duplex, but I would love to have a bigger yard and not hear my neighbor's dog. There should be a cost to that. You know, what's the cost to me to have that? And make sure that I should, I'm aware of that, that choice that you all end up having to make. And then know your cost and map them. We have these for all these models. And we, we would recommend to you, for every part of your infrastructure, you want to visualize it and audit it in a way to understand what its geospatial relationship is from its revenue flows. And the technology exists to do this. This is all Azure technology, and every community uses the software. And you're, you're stuck with this. A lot of decisions that were made by previous, previous boards decades ago, you're living with them today. The roads that you're fixing today are roads that were put down in the 60s and 70s, and you're paying the cost of, of that type of development pattern. And it's, it's not cheap and it doesn't go away. So that's a reality of that situation. So just to close, I love this quote from Michael Bloomberg. If you can't measure it, you can't manage it. Always start with the things that you have to deal with and be honest about it before you get into the other discussions that are more ephemeral or more touchy-feely. It says, you've got to pay a budget and you've got to pay for things. Also, I want to challenge you about how we set up government. A lot of what you're doing and a lot of the way that you handle government is set up in this landline technology of the way that we do things. It's the way that we've always done things for generations. And now we have new technology. We all carry around little computers in our hands. We're using that GIS software in a way that should be making us rethink the way that we look at revenues and city planning. So the technology is here for us to do some pretty creative stuff, so use it. We would argue that we have to rethink the way that the tax system works. Why should it just be something as arbitrary as what value is? What kind of perversities are baked into that? Or what kind of regression is baked into that thing? Are you taxing me more to be more efficient? Is that fair? Have those conversations. Finally, a lot of our work is covered in a nonprofit called Strong Towns. And Chuck actually does a great job, who's the author there, writing about this type of work in his books. So I find these books very useful to share with, you know, share with your friends and that are interested in city building. He does a great job discovering it or discussing it. And thanks for doing this math session.
Terrific. Thank you very much. This is incredibly interesting as we start to plan for the future and will all, you know, obviously help us as we look at future planning. Before I turn over to the board, as I know we have a lot of questions for you, Dave or Joe, are these slides going to be available?
Yeah.
For the, for us, for the town? Okay. Select woman Cowan.
Okay, this is like the most exciting presentation. I mean, this is like, this kind of stuff really excites me. And it, it makes a lot of sense for the kind of conversations that we have about, what does it mean to have affordable housing? What does it mean to build more banks and more banks and more banks? You know, and where is the money coming from? So I, I really like the way that this was presented. Obviously, the presentation that you gave may not translate as easily to others. So I don't know if there's a, is there a way to share this kind of visual and image and message with a greater population in a more confined sort of pocket, you know, message? Like, I think about Asheville, and it's a place that I've visited, and I would have never have expected that it had the history that you just described. You know, it's, it's artsy, it's very vibrant. It's, it's kind of the place that people want to go to. And so I think about our downtown and how are we missing opportunities to build upon that even more so than we, than we have? And, you know, the kinds of conversations that have, that happen when businesses come to us and they say they want to build? Like, are we thinking about things in the, in the way that you just, just described? I mean, I, I think this is super exciting. So I'm overly giddy and I've taken lots of notes and I'm not going to overwhelm you, but, you know, maybe offline, we can have a conversation about things. But the sinking fund, really curious, like, how do towns like ours, you know, send that message to, you know, taxpayers to say, trust in us and just give money that we'll put aside and promise that we'll use appropriately in the future so that we're not paying, you know, long-term bonds and taxes on that? Like, if there are towns that have been successful in doing that and sending that message, I'd love to hear more about it. Doesn't necessarily have to be right now. I am curious, and I don't know if you guys compared towns like Hanover or Durham that have clearly on a much larger scale academic institutions and had that plays a part in, you know, the tax-free, not tax-free, excuse me, let me edit. The tax-reduced but higher population that, that plays a role in, in town, you know, in general? That's something that I just, just conversations that I think would be interesting to have over the long term. And I don't know, obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, but I'm putting it out there because, I don't know, I'm just really, yay.
Well, I can address some of these questions. One is, we're doing another presentation that's, I don't know if it's open to the public tomorrow morning. Tomorrow afternoon? Tomorrow morning is in Manchester. So if you want to. This is videotaped, so you all have this digitally now. I have lots of other talks online, other ways of getting into this type of thinking. And also, you can give us a call, and we could set up a webcast or webinar, or I can always come back. It's, it's not a problem. We have your data now, so it's, it's easier for us to like dig into it. And if you want to ask us more questions, we can probe around and model things.
That's what I was going to ask. So is it possible to, to model, what is the most ideal scenario with hypothetically speaking, the available properties in town that are either for sale or for lease? And what businesses, you know, multifamily, multi-use? If those were to play a part in that building of downtown center, what would be the most economically advantageous to our town to begin with? And then, of course, the conversation of, yes, if you live on a farm, you know, what taxes are you paying compared to someone who lives in an apartment downtown? And are we talking about the same, you know? So I'm just curious to see if like, it's easy to plug in, you know?
It should be. The other thing is, I mean, we've, we've done stuff with other, other clients before where if, if they're just working with an Excel spreadsheet, we'll build them an Excel spreadsheet that just becomes a sort of a barometer for them to make decisions. As far as town and gallon relationships, you know, we've worked with Chapel Hill, North Carolina, which is, if you want to be a little shocked, there's 60% non-taxable in Chapel Hill. The campus takes up a ton of real estate. You know, I, I think you have to be honest that, and we did this as part of the, the first study that we did with, with, with George's team. We actually set up a shared comp with y'all with, trying to blink on Dartmouth, Hanover. The campus relationship there, there's, there's a cluster that you all have. Just, you just want to keep an eye on that and check it. If there's any students in the room, just plug your ears for a second. I think students are awesome. We jokingly say they don't have bottoms in their pockets. Their money just kind of flows out wherever they go because they're, they're buying food, they're, they're patronizing your stores. They're actually bringing revenue to your community, which is an awesome, awesome thing. At an extreme level, you get a place like Boston where you have 250 colleges. That's really painful for their tax base. So Boston actually works out this thing called pilot payment in lieu of taxes. Because as awesome as Harvard students are, they're also having car accidents or getting in bar fights, even though they're an Ivy League school. So that's going to cause service demands for the police department and the fire department. So that, that city was able to work out at least a sort of a quid pro quo of, they're not paying full taxes, but they're paying something. There may be opportunities to partner with, with the campus of, of doing teacher housing or something that's going to be tax productive, but it's going to be a need met for the, for the campus. And it's a shared mutual relationship that you can, you can work out. Princeton does that, where they actually had, Princeton actually do too, where they build taxable housing as part of the campus co-development. And then the future gain is, the campus is always going to be there. So now there might be teachers, but in the future, that could be student housing as the campus grows. So just finding ways to work together to mutually beneficial cooperative environment, the better that your town is, the better it is for the academy. It's a shared relationship.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Select woman Cowan.
I also am really, I mean, I, I agree. It was, it's a really exciting, it's, it's interesting to see how all of these things piece together. And I'm glad to see the chair of our planning board here because I think it's really important to tie in the economic development piece and the productivity piece with what might not necessarily be intuitive. You know, we think like, single-family housing in this, in these developments rather, you know, and that's actually not the most productive way to develop. There are things that I think are very underutilized in our town, specifically Lincoln Street and those corridors, where there is room for, you know, some multi-level business, housing, you know, development there. You know, I, I would imagine it would be really hard to change the character of our downtown and, you know, add on up there to the top floors. But I also think it's a really interesting, and I'm excited to see the local folks in the room because I think that there is going to be some conversations that we have to have about zoning and planning and how we can incorporate this into our regs and, you know, and, and how we evaluate projects. Because I think it's something that's really needed. I think it's something that we're not necessarily thinking about. We've just did this incredible study where we look at how much multifamily housing we have in the town. So like, we have so much data here. And I think if we can put all of these things together, we could develop some sort of roadmap to being a more affordable place, being more profitable place, being, you know, making sure that our development is less homogeneous and more multi, multimodal. So that's what I'm excited about. And I would just, I don't know if now is the appropriate time, but like, how do we start talking about that? You know, what is the, what is the proper convening of who needs to be at the table for this sort of stuff?
So that's, select woman Cowan, that's a great thought. I'm looking at our agenda, Mr. Dean. No, 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 no.
This isn't just.
But, but our last, our last discussion item is scheduling an all-boards meeting. And I think, and I'm looking at Dave. I think this, you know, Joe has come and given us these tools. And I mean, I think that's a great first step where we're going to have all of our boards meet collectively. And I think this should be on the agenda to start that conversation between planning, zoning, conservation. You know, all of that plays into this. So I think that's definitely one of our next steps.
Great.
Select woman Gilman.
Yes, thank you very much. The visuals on this were great with the, especially the 3D models. Our heritage commission, a number of years ago, did a mapping study of the town showing its growth over time. And the earliest map we have is 18. And the earliest map we have is 1802. And of course, it's downtown, and then as people got more prosperous and could buy more land, it just circled out and circled out till we get to the farmlands on the outside. And that's what you see in those maps, where the urban center has always been, is giving you the most value because it always has. So I, I, I want your map for that map presentation, because I think it goes with it very well. And go on to the highest best use kind of thing that select woman Cowan brought up. We do have buildings downtown that have, I love the multi-use, I love, you know, retail on the floor and housing up above. But we have businesses that are retail on the first floor and office space on the second floor, and if they have a third floor, I don't know what's in it. And so, you know, this will bring up the question of whether that is, well, we can't stop people how they want to use their property, but make it more attractive for it to be housing as opposed to office space, or how to zone that. I don't know. But I don't really have any questions. I just really appreciate the information and the way it was presented.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
So I am the select board representative to our Housing Advisory Committee, so I'm not going to try to repeat everything that's already been said here. This is absolutely incredible information. I think it's showing us how interconnected everything in Exeter is, housing, budget, roads, part of budget. I think it's invaluable information. When it comes to the all-boards meeting, yes, because Exeter community, we, as an advisory committee, along with CECO's workforce housing, New Hampshire housing, we've all been working together for just, not just Exeter, but trying to have these conversations regionally and what we can do with that and our reports and things. So it's all starting to come together. I'm, I'm feeling pretty excited. So thank you. I have a lot of information to digest. And our town planner, who I am going to give a huge shout out to, because he has been very inventive on ways that we can better educate, do things better, the cost of, and the value of density and things like that. So thank you very much for this presentation.
Well, thank you all, and thanks, George and your team, for bringing, bringing us here, and thanks for being part of this.
Well, we appreciate your presentation, and again, it's going to help us in our future planning and.
Better decisions.
We would be remiss if we didn't thank New Hampshire Housing for choosing Exeter to participate, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Most appreciated. Great.
I know you've got a long agenda. Can I just, I just want to talk about the, starting the conversation, because this project, we found out about this project, it was right before COVID, right? When, when this, and then COVID hit, and it kind of put the brakes, as it did, on a lot of things. But I started that conversation about a townwide zoning effort on the land use side, and I've been working with the Master Planner Oversight Committee, the Housing Advisory Committee, and the Planning Board, and we're almost to a point to bring some land use regulations forward. Don't know if they're going to get on the March ballot, but it basically follows this kind of thinking where it incentivizes development and gives, and, and it's like for density. So if you build in this area, well, density, you don't have density, you don't, you know, the number of units isn't important. We, we don't care about the number of units. It's, there's, there's, I've talked about this before, there's limiting factors to development, height, parking, density. You know, why have all three? Usually hit up, you know, you bump up against one before the other two even come into play. So, but in areas where you want it to be productive, you know, but also sensitive about height, you know, you know, I'm not going to sit here and propose, you know, 10 stories in Exeter. But, you know, we looked at with the month, we looked at, you know, 35 to 50 feet, adding a story or two. And then we're going to bring some land use regulations forward. So that conversation has started. We'll loop everyone in, probably going to do a presentation December 8th with the Horsley Win Group, because that's what the investment in Hampshire grant that I received was about, was make these land use regulations to incentivize development that is fiscally and environmentally responsible. And I know he just touches on the fiscal side of it, but when you, when you sprawl out, there's also environmental costs, because you're, you're going out into greenfields and wetlands and low-lying areas, and then you got to put a pump station, a lift station that the town's going to have to pay for to get the sewer out of there, because you're in the lowland. And where, and where you have the, all that infrastructure already exists. So adding layers and adding, you know, stories in this, we're trying to do that. So it's potentially going to be on the warrant for 2023, and if not, it'll be 2024.
Great.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, once David has that information, I know the Housing Advisory Committee, our plan early next year is to work to update our report, because we were waiting on some information from our key and planning commission. But as a board, if we could consider doing a work session maybe on this one issue, so that we have what we learned tonight, what David will have available, and to see it in a, a whole, I'm sorry, words aren't coming to me tonight. But if we could consider that, that would be.
I think that's a great idea. And, and Mr. Dean, I think also tying in the economic developer.
Probably.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Great. No, it's a great idea.